I'm going to call to order the Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for September the 19th, 2011. At this time, I'd ask for everybody to stand for the Honor Guard from Concord High School Fire Academy for the presentation of colors.
Honor Guard for Mark.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Post, arms.
Thank you. This time, I call on the invocation with Kathy Newsom from Bogers Chapel United Methodist Church for the invocation.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come together tonight with much thanks in our heart for this great nation that we call America. We thank you, Father, for the privilege that you've given us that other countries and nations don't have, something that we just exercised in presenting our colors, the flag that represents our country and our state. Father, for that privilege, we thank you. And, Father, we recognize that along with that privilege comes responsibility to care for that that you have entrusted us with. Father, we thank you for this board of commissioners, these men and women who have come together to address the function and make decisions about things that go on in our county. Father, we ask that you would be with them tonight, that you would grant them the wisdom that you gave Solomon as they address all of the issues and make all of the decisions. And, Father, I pray to you for the people of Cabarrus County, that we would stand in unity with these people that we have put in office, Father, that we would trust them, that we would support them, knowing that as we come together as one and in support of one another, Father, as long as we are in your will, that you will give us peace and comfort in this city in which we live. Father, for all these things, we do give you praise and we give you thanks, and we pray this day and always in the name of our Lord and our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Now, with the Fire Academy would introduce themselves, and if you'll go over to your left, my right, and Commissioner, Vice Chair, Commissioner Poole will give you a lapel pin.
Zach McClure, Senior, Level 3.
What's Level 3, Zach?
Fire Level 3, it's the highest level in the Fire Academy.
Thank you, Zach.
Austin Riley, Senior, Level 3.
Thank you, Austin.
Yes, sir.
Kyle Franklin, I'm a Senior and I'm also on Level 3.
Thank you.
I'm Amber Klein, I'm a Junior and I'm on Level 1.
Thank you, ma'am.
She's also the captain of the Honor Guard.
Can you talk a little bit about the Honor Guard? I know it's something new, it's not in every school, but if you can talk a little bit about the Honor, not just the Honor Guard, but also the Fire Academy?
Yes, sir. My name's David Barlow, I'm the Chief of the Concord High School Fire Academy, and we are one of three high school pilot programs which have Fire Academies in the state. There's a strong interest, we've had visits by seven individual school systems to add more of these statewide, but our program has grown by leaps and bounds. In three semesters, we've gone from 20 students and 20 textbooks to an inventory today which is roughly $160,000 worth of equipment. We have our own fire apparatus, we have two more on the way, they'll be here in January. The ones before January, January the 2nd will be in January. We have 110 students in the program this year, we had approximately the same last year. Because we do not have a JROTC program at Concord High School, I think that's one of the things that draws the students to it. We actually had the Honor Guard present the colors 19 different times this last school year, and after graduation, we took them to Montgomery, Alabama, where they went to the International Association of Fire Chiefs Southeastern Conference and presented in front of 300 fire chiefs and their wives with the installation banquet. That was quite an experience for them, they had not ever seen a big, huge fire show like that. We also received a piece of the World Trade Center, just like the City of Concord did, they dedicated theirs on, actually, September 11th, which was a Sunday. School was in session on Monday, so we dedicated ours the following day. And so, the two pieces, one is for Concord, the city, and of course, Concord Fire and Life Safety, the other is at the Fire Academy, and it will be, it is in place right now at the Memorial Wall. So, we must never forget.
You're right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chief Barlow.
Yes, sir.
We have before us the minutes that were passed out or sent to us for review for July the 18th, August the 1st, August the 15th. The 15th came out, I believe, over the weekend. Is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The agenda that we have before us has some changes, and I would note everybody's, bring everybody's attention to the proclamation honoring the life of James Roy Davis Jr., he passed away this past weekend, as well as the minutes from August the 15th. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented with the changes?
So moved, Chairman.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next matter is C1, excuse me, is, we've done that, okay, C1 is the presentation of a resolution of appreciation from the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. Mr. Todd McGee, if you'll please come up, and Commissioner Burge will be accepting this resolution on the Board of Commissioners' behalf.
Thank you, Chairman White, it's indeed a great pleasure to be back here in Cabarrus County. We had a wonderful time at our annual conference last month over at the Convention Center, it's a beautiful facility, and I can honestly tell you that while we were there, we heard so many positive comments from our commissioners and managers and county officials from across the state who attended, and we had, I had personally several come up to me and say, "We should consider having a dislocation every year." They just loved that everything was there, it was easily accessible, everybody could be in the same hotel, and the golf course was right there for those who wanted to play golf, you had plenty of meeting space for all the meetings that we have. So, it's just a wonderful facility, the whole region should be proud of that, and I can assure you that while we won't be coming back every year, we will be coming back to Cabarrus County, I'm sure about that. So, we would like to present this resolution of appreciation, and I won't read the whole thing, but it was adopted at our business session unanimously by all the counties who were in attendance. We particularly would like to single out County Manager John Day, Clerk Kay Honeycutt, Deputy Manager Mike Downs, Amy Hawkins is around here somewhere, a couple of other members of your staff who just would, did great jobs in helping us prepare for the conference and getting everything ready, the local foods emphasis was just wonderful, and also, while we were on site, you just had so many staff who were helpful and did everything that they could to make sure that this was a wonderful conference, and again, thank you for all of that, and just, I'd like to reiterate that we have had nothing but rave reviews of the whole conference, and I am assured that we will be back in Cabarrus County soon.
Thank you, Mr. McGee.
So, I'm going to present this to Mr. Burge.
Thank you very much, you're in the best county in the state.
Next that we have is a recognition for former Cabarrus County Planning and Zoning Commission members. This time, I ask Commissioner Carruth, as well as Ms. Morse, to come up for the presentation to be given to Mr. Barry Shoemaker, I don't see Mr. Tommy Porter, but if y'all will come up.
Well, Barry, it is certainly an honor to be able to present this to you tonight. I know that back in 2003, 2004, you were facing a tremendous challenge here in the county with the way things were going as far as growth was concerned, and you're one of the ones that pioneers of the new board we put together to come in and help to kind of bring some sanity to our process, and you've been a faithful member of the Planning and Zoning Board and Commission for, you know, since then, and I want to thank you for your service, certainly you and Tommy both have been, credit to the community that you guys have been here and representing the community on this commission. So, this is presented to Barry C. Shoemaker, recognition of outstanding and dedicated service to the Cabarrus Planning and Zoning Commission, August 15th, 2005, August 31st, 2011, presented by the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners on September 19th, which is obviously today, 2011. Barry, congratulations.
Thank you.
Barry, thank you for your six years of service, if you, if there's anything you'd like to say, or?
Only that I enjoyed my time with the, serving as a planning and zoning participant, learned a lot from Rich and from Suzie and from all the folks that were with us, and we've had a great opportunity to help the county. We've seen a lot of plans put in place for directing our growth, and I think that as long as we stay faithful to those types of things, then this county will grow in a nice way. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker. Next is, it's Communications and Outreach on C3, is a proclamation, October the 15th, as Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Day enables the citizens of Cabarrus County to consider how, as individuals and communities, they can meet. I would call on Ms. Angela Bullard and Mr. Christopher Bullard to come up and do a presentation, and I believe there is a video?
Yes.
pregnancies in the United States end in miscarriage, stillbirth, or the death of a newborn baby, whereas it is a tragedy to lose the life of a child, whereas babies sometimes live within
The John.
or outside their mother's wombs for only a short period of time, whereas even the shortest lives are still valuable, and the grief of those who mourn the loss of these lives should be, not be trivialized, whereas all 50 states have designated October 15th as Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Day, whereas the Remembrance of Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Day can give validation to those who have lost a baby through miscarriage, stillbirth, or child, other child, other complications, whereas the Observance of Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Day will provide the citizens of Cabarrus County with an opportunity to increase their understanding of the great tragedy involved in the deaths of unborn or newborn babies, and whereas the Observance of Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Day will enable the citizens of Cabarrus County to consider how, as individuals and communities, they can meet the needs of bereaved mothers, fathers, and family members, and work to prevent the causes of these deaths. Now therefore, it be resolved that the Board of County, Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim October 5th, 2011 as Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Day in Cabarrus County.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion to adopt this?
So moved.
We have a motion to adopt this proclamation, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all. Next we have is C4, is a proclamation designated in October the 9th through the 15th as DECA Week, and I'll turn this over to Commissioner, Vice Chair, Liz Poole.
This is a proclamation, DECA is a, what we call a co-curricular club, it's a club at the high schools for students that are in marketing, finance, or hospitality courses, and they can earn scholarships as a result of participating in DECA. Many of you may have participated in it yourself when you were in high school, it's high schools and colleges, and we were asked to proclaim the week of October 9th through 15th as DECA Week, and therefore, we have the proclamation. Whereas October 9th through 15th, 2011, has been designated DECA Week, and whereas the mission of DECA is to prepare emerging leaders and entrepreneurs in marketing, finance, hospitality, and management, and whereas DECA's guiding principles are designed to explain how DECA fulfills their mission, and whereas DECA enhances the co-curricular education of members through a comprehensive learning program that integrates into classroom instruction, applies learning, connects to business, and promotes competition, and whereas DECA's activities assist in the development of academically prepared, community-oriented, professionally responsible, experienced leaders, and whereas DECA's attributes and values describe the organization's priorities and standards, including competence, innovation, integrity, and teamwork, now therefore, the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim October 9th through 15th, 2011 as DECA Week in Cabarrus County, and urge all citizens to become familiar with the services and benefits offered by the DECA chapters at Concord High School and J.M. Robinson High School, and to support and participate in these programs to prepare them for college and professional careers.
With that, do we have a motion to adopt the proclamation designating October the 9th through the 15th as DECA Week?
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And next is C5, which is the addition to the agenda, which is found on page 670. This is a proclamation that, that we want, that I thought was important for us to consider. It's a proclamation honoring the life of James Roy Davis Jr., he passed away, Roy Davis passed away Thursday night, Friday morning, and he was the owner of S&amp;D Coffee and did quite a bit within the community, and I thought it was appropriate that we consider this, and here is the proclamation, is whereas James Roy Davis Jr. was born in Cabarrus County, North Carolina, on November the 12th, 1933, and whereas James Roy Davis Jr. was a graduate of Concord High School, class of 1951, and whereas James Roy Davis Jr. graduated from Davidson College in 1955, Phi Beta Kappa, and was a member of the Phi Gamma Delta Fraternity, and whereas after college, James Roy Davis Jr. joined the U.S. Navy where he served as a supply officer for three and a half years aboard the U.S. Fisk at Point Magoo in California, and whereas James Roy Davis Jr. returned to Concord to help run the family business, S&amp;D Coffee, in 1959, and whereas James Roy Davis Jr. married Nan Sue Jones of Charlestown in 1960, and was blessed with two sons and three grandchildren, and whereas S&amp;D Coffee Inc. became a national supplier of tea and coffee under Davis's leadership, and whereas James Roy Davis Jr. was a member of the First Presbyterian Church and served as a past deacon and elder, and whereas James Roy Davis Jr. valued giving back to the community through personal service and financial support, and whereas James Roy Davis Jr. served on the boards of many educational, charitable, cultural, and civic organizations and financial institutions, and whereas James Roy Davis Jr. received many prestigious rewards throughout his lifetime, and whereas the Davis Theater in Concord is named after Mr. and Mrs. Roy, James Roy Davis Jr. in honor of their support for the Cabarrus Arts Council, and whereas this beloved father, husband, grandfather, and civic leader passed away on September 15th, 2011, and will be greatly missed by his family, church, and community, and whereas the Board of Commissioners, Chamber, Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners hereby extends its sympathy to the Davis family and proclaims September 9th, 2011, as James Roy Davis Jr. Day in Cabarrus County, adopted this 19th day of September, 2011. Do we have a motion to adopt this proclamation?
Blue for approval.
Do we have a motion, we have a second? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Davis did do quite a bit, and it will be difficult to fill the void, but, you know, he did a great, a lot of good things for Cabarrus County, like many have. With that being said, the next thing we have is informal public comments. I have several cards up here, and I've tried to speak with some of you because some of the things that are going to be discussed are discussed later in the meeting, I've tried to pull those out. If for some reason I've pulled it out incorrectly, please let me know, but I have Mary Tucker, you wanted to talk about the tax reeval, you want to talk now, Mrs. Tucker?
Yes.
Mrs. Tucker, if you'll please come forward and give us your address and let us know what your concerns are, please, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, if you want to move the microphone up or down, feel free to.
Hello, I'm 5213 Ellie Court, Concord, North Carolina. I'm here to talk about the revaluation for several reasons. First of all, I'm a real estate broker, and I have worked at Beaufort County for, at the appraisers office, the planning board, and the tax department, so I'm familiar with the whole process. What I'm asking all of you is to really look closely at this, I know the county needs services, and I know they need operating budgets, et cetera, et cetera, but a lot of our values have gone down, I have spoke to several real estate brokers in my neighborhoods and many others stating that property values have come down $10,000 to $20,000. My properties refinanced twice within the last year, and they refinanced for less than what I paid for it. So, I'm asking that you take a good look at this, because not only is foreclosures, but a lot of people are out of work, and again, I realize county does need services, but to look at it closely, because some of these certified appraisers you have are not certified, they're county appraisers, there's a difference between certified and county. So, just take a good look, I had one young lady come on my block, and she saw two houses and left. Now, I wasn't home the rest of the time, but my house is not comparable to anybody else's house on the block, so I'm going to take a good look at that when it comes in. I just ask you all to be fair, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Tucker. Next I have is Mrs. Barnhart, do you like to speak now or at the public hearing, or?
My name is Marilyn Barnhart, I live at 5800 Wabash Lane, Concord, North Carolina, that is my physical address. I lived in the city of Kannapolis for 12 years, I don't have any water and I don't have any sewer. I have my own well, I have my own sewage. So, I live in the city for 12 years, paying taxes for garbage collection, that's it. I understand from my lay that we will never get any water and sewer in Farm Hill, I live in Farm Hill. I live in a mobile home, a double wide, for 25 years. In 2004, it was valued at $48,000, in 2008, it was valued at $124,000. It's a 25-year-old mobile home. I want to know why my property has gone, I only have .71 acres, that's all I have, which is not even 3/4 of an acre, and it's valued at $80,000. I think that is totally ridiculous. We have an insert fireplace, we don't have a regular fireplace, this is a mobile home. We have 25 years of wiring and plumbing in the house. This is not a stick-built house, this is a mobile home, a double wide. Now, we have Rick Meeks, who owns property on Cabir, I mean Kannapolis Parkway, two houses up from me on the top, right across from Efton Ridge, and I don't know who took the houses out, but he owns the property now, he owns four lots, and he has, the houses are gone, and he leaves the property with tall grass and weeds, and it's disgraceful, and it attracts rodents and snakes. We have a lot of mobile homes in Farm Hill that are rented, some with illegal aliens, and that devaluates your property value, and rental homes and homeownership, which I am a homeownership, doesn't work well at all. This needs to be all taken in consideration when you reevaluate my property, because in 2004, it was $48,000, and 2008, it's $124,000. There's just no way that you could sell this property for $124,000. And I think the reason for that was is because Farm Hill was going to be sold as commercial, but it never materialized. We were never sold as commercial, we probably never will be sold as commercial. So, it needs to be this evaluation as a mobile home, and like I said, we do have an awful lot of renters, which we didn't have before, everybody owns their own land and home, and I'd like you to take that in consideration of a 25-year-old mobile home.
Mrs. Barnhart, as a point of clarification, you said you live in Concord, but you, you have a Concord zip, but you live in Kannapolis?
Yes, my physical address by the post office is Concord, I have no mail coming there, by the way. I have a post office box, but I live in the city of Kannapolis since 1999, June 30th. That'll dead or go down in infamy, because I hate Kannapolis, I never wanted to be annexed into the city of Kannapolis, but the state of North Carolina says that I don't have a choice as a free American citizen, so that's why I don't have any water or sewer.
What I was, what I was trying to get at is, in regards to the issue with Mr. Meeks, does he live, does this property in Kannapolis, or is it?
Yes, it's in Farm Hill, yes, it's on the top of Kannapolis Parkway, in Farm Hill.
Okay, because what, in regards to your concerns about the tall grass and the weeds, we'll need to make certain we contact Kannapolis in regards to?
Well, they're, they've been informed about this, but it takes twisting of the arm for anything to ever get done with him.
Well, you've brought the concern to us, and I'll make a point to call to Kannapolis on your behalf, telling you about their concern, about your concern, but I wanted to make certain that it was Kannapolis and not Concord. Thank you, ma'am. Next is Mr. Barnhart, would you like to speak now, Mr. Barnhart, or at the hearing later?
My name is Thomas Barnhart, and I live at 5800 Wabash Lane, Concord, North Carolina, and I was just want to speak on the, I think it's kind of unfair for people on the state guidelines for this reevaluation. We're being told that our home is valued based on what the houses sell for in the area, and even a developer himself even pointed out that our development in Farm Hill is nothing but a junkyard, but if a house one mile down the road in the nice neighborhoods, that stick-built, well-built home sells for $125,000, that they're going to include everything from there back to I-85, it's been that same value based on the fact that our house happens to be a certain square footage as another house, even though ours is a mobile home, like my wife stated, it's 25, 26 years old, and we're not a new stick-built house, but there, there's probability that they would base it on that fact just from a silhouette reevaluation, and that's what it concerns me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barnhart. Next, I apologize ahead of time, Jason Osherike, would you like to speak now or at the hearing, sir?
I can speak at the hearing, whatever your purpose is.
Six of one, half dozen of the other.
I'll go and speak.
Okay.
Commissioners, I appreciate your...
Your three minutes are up, I'm sorry.
I appreciate that. I appreciate you holding this meeting as well. I wanted to come speak about this sort of aggregate report as opposed to a specific individual property. And when I looked through the report, one of the things that I wanted to focus on was sort of the means of doing a generic appraisal, which you have to do. You obviously can't specifically appraise every single person's house. And what I looked at was the base rates that you came up with. It's my understanding that the, you calculate a base rate for a square foot and then multiply, for instance, a single-family home, the square footage of that by your base rate, do some add-ons, and then take that value and use that to apply the tax. So the base rate makes a big difference in terms of coming up with the value of the house. So what I looked at, I compared the 2004, 2008, and 2012 revaluations. And so in 2004, I used the S&amp;P Case Shiller Home Index, which the federal government uses in terms of calculating home prices nationally. So in 2004, the index said that for the Charlotte area, which includes, specifically includes Cabarrus County, the index value was 11346. From 2004 to 2008, obviously, we had appreciation. That value, the index went from, went to 13345, which was a 17.6% increase in the index for our area. Accordingly, the Cabarrus County base rate for single-family residential went from 60 cents in the 2004 report to 71 cents, which was an 18.3% increase, which is just about exactly the same as what the index increase was. So what I wanted to look at was, clearly, there was appreciation in from 2004 to 2008, and there's been depreciation from 2008 to 2012. So if you look at the index, the index again in June of 2008 was 133.45. Currently, the index is 112.46, which is a 15.7% decrease in the index value. However, the, when the index went up, our base rate correspondingly went up. When the index went down, you can see that base rate has not gone down. Our base rate in Cabarrus County went from 71 cents, which was the ultra-height of the market bubble real estate prices based on unscrupulous lending and borrowing, and crashed to basically where we are now, and we're having a reduction of one cent in the base rate. So where is the base rate decrease? The current index shows that we actually have a lower index today than we had in 2004, but the base rate is 16% higher than it was in 2004. So we have a 15.7% decrease in the Case Shiller Index from 2008 to the current, which is 11 times greater than the corresponding base rate decrease that the report proposes. So what do I think is the cause of this? In 2004, well, in 2008, when the, let me back up. When the 2004 values were finished up and we went to the 2008, our budget, ad valorem taxes from 2007 to 2008, which is the last year of the 2004 report, were $101 million. In 2008, ad valorem taxes went up 30%, $131 million. So the county got $30 million extra in 2008, 2009. And you can see a corresponding total revenue and expenditures went up 16.3% from that revaluation. If we look at 2012, you would think that, knowing that property values have gone down, that the budget would go down correspondingly. But the budget hasn't gone down at all, in fact, it's gone up. If you look at from 2007 to 2012 proposed or adopted budget, you have a 30.9% increase in ad valorem taxes included. And total revenue has increased 18.5%, and total expenditures 18.5%. So in essence, what you have is a hidden tax increase. And we were all promised that if we passed the sales tax increase, that our property taxes wouldn't be increased. But you can look at the numbers yourselves and see that our property is being significantly overvalued, which makes us all pay more tax. If I have to pay 10 cents of every dollar that my house is worth, and my house is worth $1, and I owe 10 cents, but if you come back to me and say, no, your house is worth $2, then I have to pay 20 cents, and you can say, well, we never raised taxes, but my tax bill has gone from 10 cents to 20 cents. And that's essentially what's happened in this revaluation. You're not properly devaluing our properties, and that's leading to a tax increase on all the people of Cabarrus County. So what I would ask is that you go back to essentially 2004. I mean, that's what the substantive facts show that we should do, is go back to those prices, that the bubble that burst in 2008 has completely burst, and our prices are back to 2004. And we need to take a real evaluation of what the proper values are instead of sort of making up numbers to compensate for increased expenditures.
Some of those, hopefully, some of those questions will get answered during the hearing or during the presentation later. Jason, and I apologize, I would, Osterreich?
Osterreich, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Consent agenda, or excuse me, Old Business is the update on the Cabarrus County school system, Kannapolis City School Systems, qualified school construction bonds. At our work session, we had Kannapolis come in, and Mr. Overcash spoke to us about the Kannapolis City School Systems. And now, in regards to the Cabarrus County School System, I call on Mr. Wickie. This is on page 38 of our agenda.
If I just click out of this, am I, okay.
You can do your page down right beside that, 38 at the top. Nope, there you go.
One too many.
You're down to 49 now.
I'm sorry.
Just click back to E.
I've created a...
No, you're fine, just go, click over to the E.
Oh, keep...
Over to Old Business.
Yep.
And then...
Oh. No. That's fine, we'll start here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Hopefully, you all had a chance to look at this information, and it's a report that you've seen before, but what I wanted to point out to you, and I'll go by the agenda items so that we don't miss out on any of the facts. In terms of executed projects, we've been successful in executing a number of projects this summer, and we continue to work towards that goal of executing additional projects. But I think the main things that we accomplished this summer were really to construct renovations to Coltrane Web School for STEM program there, and also modifications to the, well, moving the PLC, the Performance Learning Center, from the old Odell site to the J.N. Freeze Middle School. So those were two major events for the school system that we were able to accomplish. We also bid work at the J.N. Freeze Middle School for upgrades to their technology systems, and that has been completed. And the work for the kitchen hoods was also bid, and a portion of that work has been completed. The write-up that I gave you, or description rather, talks a little bit about that work. And I think the main thing that came out, and I've mentioned it before, we discussed in previous meetings that prices are going up, and that is in fact true. What we're seeing, in the case of the four kitchen hoods, the prices came in, we had good bidding, but they, all the bids were high. And so our board's decision was to accept the bids, the lowest bid of those received, and to go with only three of the hoods at this time, leaving the fourth for the future. And when I, I'll explain that in a moment, but, so if you look at about, well, at the bottom of the page, first page, you'll see that, and I'll try and do this again so I don't get everybody lost.
Is this your Excel spreadsheet?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That would be page 41 on our agenda.
That's correct. At the very bottom, you'll see that those four bids were such that we had to take that, take the one project out, which we decided Coltrane Web was probably, if you're talking about conditions, probably the best condition of the four, and could wait a bit. And so we took the funds and have proposed that we use those dollars to, from the Coltrane Web project to fund the other three. And so we've just recently installed, completed the installation of the first hood at Mount Pleasant Middle School, and we're getting prepared to do the one at Arbrown McAllister. And then, and we have to sort of time it so we have about a four-day window of opportunity. And that's pretty much working around the clock to get the old equipment out and the new equipment in place. And so we, the Mount Pleasant was probably the most difficult, and so we chose that one first. We worked over the holiday weekend, recent holiday weekend, and that went well. And so we're fairly comfortable, Arbrown McAllister is a much simpler installation, so we're going to be doing this coming weekend. So that work has been moving forward. And the wireless project at J.N. Freeze also came in over budget. And in an effort to find dollars to address that, the, let me get down to that page so it makes a little bit more sense. On page 42, second sheet of the spreadsheet, it demonstrates that what our school board is recommending is that we take the money out of J.M. Robinson High School and Mount Pleasant High School and fund those projects using other monies.
When you say fund those projects, fund the Robinson and...
And Mount Pleasant High School wireless projects. Fund those using other funds that the school district has, and use the monies of the QSCB projects of those two schools to complete the J.N. Freeze project. So the, and although we've added the two columns as were requested in this form, I'm not sure yet that it does everything we'd like to do. We're still, we're still working on this form, and we hope to improve it because it sort of demonstrates when I put all zeros in that the money's coming out there, out of those two projects. But I submit that when we have all the projects active, it's going to be a lot more confusing. So we've got to figure out a way to make that a little bit more understandable. But those are the active projects at the moment. The other questions that you had were about the 10%, excuse me, project timelines and budgets. The yellow projects that were identified in yellow on our form is still really the list of projects that we're attempting to bid as soon as possible. Our hope was by October 15th. That may be a bit optimistic in the case of one or two of those. But for all intents and purposes, all projects are in design, and all of them are moving forward. Now, there are a handful of projects that our board has met on and is identifying as projects that will be bid later than this first group of projects. And the reason for that is because of the rise of, in the cost of these projects, we're concerned that we're going to run out of money. And so we've identified a handful of projects that we would like to keep in abeyance at this point or on hold until we see where the rest of these go. And that's not to say we won't do them, but we just don't want to spend all, commit all the dollars and run short somewhere in the process. Another reason for that is, is as you get into some of these older buildings, we're finding, as you might suspect, hidden conditions, things that we didn't anticipate as part of the estimating process. In terms of meeting the plan for the 10% commitment, and I just lost my, roughly, we've already committed and have either spent through design fees or construction dollars approximately $1.6 million. So we well exceed the 10% commitment that we had to have in place by October 15th. So we're in good shape there. And the last piece was the Technology Review Committee recommendations. And I'm not sure, I believe Dr. Prost was here either last week or in the previous month, making a presentation on that subject. We are certainly moving in the direction of the Technology Committee recommendations. We, for example, in the, in the new technology projects that we're talking about, we are reflecting, and those projects will reflect the idea of utilizing a centralized, and I'm not the technologist, but the centralized servers that the county has, and will be taking, all projects will have some servers, but we won't have the large servers in the schools. Those will be utilizing, to the best of my knowledge, the county's servers and be a part of that, following that form of agreement that you all have with us. So with that, I certainly entertain any questions the Commissioners have.
Any questions for Mr. Wickie?
I have a question. Could you, if I'm correct, when I looked at the school board's agenda, they have approved that priority list. Could you make sure we get a copy, just so that in the event, as you know, sometimes we get asked questions and, you know, not that I want to speak on behalf of the school board, but that list, since you mentioned it, the priority list, that might be good for us to get.
Yes, I'd be happy to.
Sorry, Kay can get it and forward it to us.
Absolutely.
Whenever you get that. But I think they approved it.
It's in the process, it'll be finalized this evening.
Wherever you get it finalized, whenever they finalize it, would be nice if we can get a copy of it, too.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Happy to.
Any other questions? Commissioner Meesmer.
I would like to ask in regards to the wireless projects, you said that you would have to take the money from, is it J.M. Robinson or Hickory Ridge?
It's J.M. Robinson and Mount Pleasant High Schools.
That you would take, okay. How much did it come over budget, the J.M. Freeze wireless?
Approximately, it was just, the total of those two projects was around $42,000, and we needed, I believe, about half of that to complete the J.N. Freeze project.
I think it says here $19,355.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Okay.
Anything else? Thank you very much, Mr. Wickie.
Thank you.
We have before us the consent agenda, items 1 through 13. If there, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next that we have is new business under G1 is the appeal and rezone case in public hearing. And before we get started into that, one of my partners in the law office is representing the landowner, property owner in this, and I think it's a matter that I need to recuse myself. So I would make a motion to recuse myself. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. I will turn this over to Commissioner Poole, and I will step out of the chamber.
Again, this is G, yeah, G1, the appeal of the rezoning case. And the first thing we will call on, Suzy Morris, to give us a staff report, please.
I'm actually going to shift gears and use the Elmo in case if we have people from the crowd that are interested in pointing to the maps or anything like that. You should have all of this in your packets as well.
This is an appeal of a rezoning case, just petition, appeal 2011-01. The applicant is Mr. Michael Bergner, acting as agent for Highway 2427 LLC. The property is located along Highway 2427. It is approximately 138 acres, and its current zoning is County CR and LC. And the proposed zoning designation is LC and HDR. The County CR District is one unit per two acres, and the HDR District allows typically six units per acre or up to 200. acres. And the HDR District allows typically six units per acre or up to eight units per acre if it is designated as a mixed-use project. This property is located in the Town of Midland's utility service area. That is through the City of Concord. Prior to development, the applicant must receive an intent-to-serv letter from the City of Concord to ensure the water and sewer is available and will be provided for the development. The intent of the Countryside Residential District essentially is lands in this district have a strong rural pastoral feel. Although it's capable of handling higher densities, typically this is a lower-density development district. And again, density is permitted in the CR District range from one unit per two acres, if the design, if it's a conventional subdivision, up to one unit per acre if the open space design option is used. And that would require that open space dedication and also public water and sewer are not permitted in this zoning district. Limited commercial, essentially that's small-scale commercial and office development to complement the surrounding residential uses. High-density residential, it's intended to allow for much broader categories of uses residential as well as commercial uses. It also would include multifamily-type uses. Density is permitted in HDR ranges from four and a half units per acre using the open space option for a subdivision, up to six units per acre if they use the amenity option. And then again, up to eight units per acre if that density bonus is granted. There were several comments received from staff, you have received from different review staff. You have that in your packets. I'd be happy to address any of those comments if you're interested in any of them specifically. The land use plan, the Midland Land Use Plan that the county currently has adopted. It does call for this particular area to be medium-density residential, which is typically two to four units per acre. The, the front part, it calls for limited commercial, so that is consistent with the zoning that it currently has. But the proposed density is not consistent with the land use plan. This is a rezoning. It is a conventional rezoning. So as proposed, it is not consistent with the Midland Area Land Use Plan. It is a conventional rezoning request. That means that conditions cannot be placed on it. Anything allowed in the LC and HDR districts would be permitted on the subject property. The board would need to consider the information provided to determine if the proposed rezoning is consistent with the commission's vision for this particular area. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have or get into any more detail if there's an area that you would like me to.
Okay. Commissioners, are there any questions for Ms. Morris at this time? Commissioner Carruth?
Yeah, Susie, the, the, of course, MDR that, that is part of the land use plan. In the HDR, what are some of the different, I mean, it's multifamily housing primarily the one, the one thing that can be, is allowed in HDR. It's not allowed in MDR?
If you remember, we have a, a zoning designation that is MDR. But this is the land use classification, which would be the two to four units per acre in the land use plan. And it does call for medium-density residential, which would be two to four units per acre. It would allow for those type of densities, whether it be single-family or multifamily, if they had the right zoning designation.
Uh huh.
So we have the, the MDR as part of the land use plan, and then separate our MDR zoning district. So this particular property is zoned CR, which is Countryside Residential, that very low density. And then it has that medium-density land use allocation on it, which would be two to four units per acre, consistent with rezoning to a different designation.
Given the, I was looking at the map on page two fifty, I guess. Is that the one?
Is that?
Okay. In our agenda, it's one that's got the, it's land used NC twenty-four twenty-seven, Flowstor Road. Got like a, seems like a little drawing of the creek basin. Yeah, that one.
This, this particular map is actually provided by the Town of Midland. It is a land use plan that they have adopted. That is where the Midland comments came from that you have in your staff report. And I believe that they do have staff here this evening that could address those comments and speak to this map if you'd like.
I was just curious about how much of the land is actually usable for development versus, because it's not like a typical thing we've seen in the past where you have, you know?
That's correct.
You know, a hundred acres of land that's flat, there's no, nothing on it that can be just completely carved up, you know? Seems like it to me that's somewhat what limits, is physically limited to what you can do on it that would govern the development versus the zoning classification it has.
That's correct. And if this property were to develop in Cabarrus County under our zoning ordinance, it would be subject to our water body overlay district, which would take up, you know, up to two hundred and fifty feet on either side of that stream, potentially.
Any other questions?
This time I don't have more.
I have one. Previously, or at the work session, there was a comment that the petitioner needs to have a letter from the City of Concord that they would provide service to that piece of property. But I don't think that had been received by our work session. Has that been received?
No, it has not. And if you, you know, look at the intent of the district as well as what is to be considered during the public hearing, it does speak to the issue of utilities.
That's what you said, was that they were, you don't have, or the zoning does not call for city water and sewer there. But, I mean, I remember at the work session, there were comments made about the City of Concord because they're the provider to Midland. It is a requirement that, that a letter be, be provided to the county stating that the city would be, City of Concord has agreed to provide services. So just to clarify, that letter has never been received as far as we know.
That's correct.
And so we don't have any confirmation that City of Concord would in fact provide services to this piece of property.
That's correct. We do not have an intent-to-serv letter at this time related to this case.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. At this time, we do need to have a public hearing. So I will call, open the public hearing on this matter. I have three cards currently for people that would like to speak on this. So I want to call on them first. First, I will call on Mayor Kathy Kitsch from Midland. Where is she? There you are.
Commissioners, I'm here before you today representing the town and its citizens to convey that we do not support the proposed rezoning to high-density residential for the case number that is being presented on your agenda. The rezoning of this property, the high-density residential, is not in concurrence with Midland's Town Plan 2030 Land Use and Comprehensive Master Plan. This was passed unanimously by the Midland Town Council on August the ninth for the following reasons. Our plan shows this subject area as rural slash agricultural. An excerpt from our vision statement from our town plan for this area indicates that the northwest planning quadrant shall be designated for preservation where future development is kept to a minimum. This area will essentially maintain its current dominance of rural residential development with commercial and light industrial development concentrated, concentrated in the designated centers. Future policy efforts will be directed towards the prevention of urban sprawl and protection of open space and natural resources, resource areas. Our plan does not anticipate sufficient infrastructure during the planning period for this. Our plan aims to protect the level of service along our major thoroughfares. Furthermore, the recently approved Midland Development Ordinance establishes development standards requiring access in accordance with sound growth principles that will allow NC twenty-four twenty-seven to remain a free-flowing highway with carefully planned points of access for higher-density developments. Thank you for your time, and I hope you strongly consider the voice of our constituents in the Midland community. Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine Coppers?
I spoke at the zoning thing, the zoning hearing for the Planning and Zoning Board, and basically going to say the same thing I said there. I've lived at seven twenty-nine Honeysuckle Lane in the Pine Ridge subdivision in the Midland zoning district since nineteen eighty-seven. Parcel number five-five-three-five dash thirty-one dash sixty-one twenty-eight butts up against my neighborhood, which is zoned country residential. Rezoning the property under consideration tonight from countryside residential to high-density residential would adversely affect homeowners on Honeysuckle Lane and change the nature of the neighborhood. The zoning, the rezoning would also be inconsistent with the Town of Midland's long-range plan for development. And this kind of spot zoning should not be allowed. We ask the county commission to protect the interests of numerous current residents of Cabarrus County over the interest of one single real estate investor. So please uphold the decision of the Planning and Zoning Board on July twelfth, two thousand and eleven, which denied this zoning request. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Sparza?
Sparra.
Sparra, sorry.
Hi, I'm Mary Sparra, and I live at seven fourteen Honeysuckle Lane. My piece of property on this nice little PowerPoint presentation is in the very left corner. You see Honeysuckle Lane has got that interesting little shape, that hook shape there. And my piece of property is one that looks like a piece of the pie. I'm in that corner. So I am adjacent to this land, so it does very much affect me as a resident of, of Honeysuckle Lane in, in the Midland area. This was denied at the zoning meeting. And if you looked at the other overlay that they had earlier, you can see that there is a floodplain area there, and wildlife roams freely back there. There's no way to easily go back in there unless he's going to go in and he's going to take and bulldoze everything down and rebuild and try and figure out a way to be able to revert the water, to divert the water, to be able to utilize that as a way to change the floodplain. That's the only way he's going to be able to do that. You've got enough money, you can do anything you want to. But it does impact the neighborhood. We've got a great neighborhood. We've got fourteen homes, or fifteen families, I'm sorry, that are in that neighborhood. And every single person cares for one another in that neighborhood, and it's very tight. The quality of life there is excellent, and we have flora and fauna that have resided in that area to prevent the urban sprawl. And we have everything that brings quality of life to my life. And, okay, so maybe it's not, it's not putting the dollar bill into your tax coffers that Mr. Pittinger can do if that is rezoned. But the people in our community deserve to be able to retain the quality of life that we have when we moved out there, when we purchased that property, knowing that that land had a certain quality there, that was a refuge for wildlife. And we ask and respectfully ask that you do maintain that zoning the way it is now. Uphold the zoning ordinance as it was set up. And there's plenty of property on the front side of that. You'll be able to get revenue from that because it is zoned commercial. So you can get funds from that. So we don't, we don't feel that there's going to be any impact by rezoning it outside of the CR zone. High density is not going to be optimum for any family that lives there. Even if you do leave it the way that they had planned it when Midland had originally planned to put in their two to four homes, and you're wanting to put up to eight homes or more, I'd be very interested to see how you're going to be able to do that without impacting that area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Burgner from Harson Williams, would you like to address this, please?
with Harson Williams here in Concord. And I represent the Robert Pittinger Company, which is the sole member manager of Highway twenty-four twenty-seven LLC, which is the applicant in the rezoning hearing that you have for you tonight. One of the, the, I think it's particularly appropriate that we're speaking to you tonight when tax issues are before this board. And, and I think that one of the main things that I want to talk to you about is those tax issues and how they are affected by the zoning that property has placed on it by a governing board. What you, what you have here, and I think that one of the, the statements that was brought up earlier was, is that this is not a special use or a continual, conditional use application. And that's true. Mr. Pittinger's company provides what's called a land bank service. And it's actually an IRS designation, which allows them to actually bank land and, and utilize that land, offering it for sale to developers who can utilize the land properly. And developers who come in and utilize land banking services are the ones who have the ability to come in and put in high-quality developments in those locations. And that's one of the reasons that, that we're putting this before you today, is because the densities that are allowed in the countryside residential, as stated earlier, are simply not in, they are not the type of densities that are set forth under the, the current Midland Use Plan, which was adopted by this board. There is talk of the Midland Plan that has been put together. That plan has not been adopted by this board. And the current zoning ordinance that this county is operating under has a requirement that you utilize that plan in determining whether it's incongruence with the existing plan. Now, the existing plan, as adopted by this board, calls for this to be medium-density residential. And as they indicated, that's a two to four units per acre designation. Under the current zoning ordinance set forth by Cabarrus County, medium-density residential as a zoning group will only allow you to get up to two and a half units per acre. You can get an additional two and a half units per acre, excuse me, an additional two units per acre by switching it over to a mixed-use development. But in so doing, you have to prove that you actually are utilizing up to three different uses on that property. Makes it extremely difficult, takes up a lot of the land, and causes a lot of, of additional expense to go into the property. In addition, we talked a lot earlier about the fact that a high-density residential designation would allow up to six units per acre. The only way that that can be done is with an amenity subdivision that's set forth under the zoning ordinance. An amenity subdivision requires fifty percent of the property be donated to open space, okay? The simple fact is, is that when you're looking at a piece of property that is this large and you have to give fifty percent of it over to open space, simply can't be done from a financial standpoint. So really, the amenity subdivision is out. So when you look at it, you're really looking at four units per acre on the top side from a high-density residential standpoint, okay? Which is incongruence with the medium-density residential designation, which was set forth in the Midland Land Use Plan, which is what this board has adopted. That's what we're looking for here. The simple fact is, is that there is not a zoning designation in Cabarrus County, which allows that two to four units per acre to be done, and to be done in a, in a financially feasible manner, unless you go to a high-density residential designation. And that's the way that the county ordinance is set up. So what we have here is, is we've got a, sort of an incongruence between what the, the medium-density residential designation as set forth in the land use plan is, and with what is set forth on the zoning ordinance. And that's why I thought it was particularly appropriate that she brought up the difference between the two. There is a substantial difference between the two. And that is that high-density residential is truly the only designation that we can utilize and get above a four-unit-per-acre designation, or get to a four-unit-per-acre designation. That's why we ask for high-density residential to be put forth here. One of the things that I think that this board has described in the past is that development, and the changes that have occurred in development since the world sort of crashed in two thousand and eight, is that there's a new normal in development. And that that new normal is that we can no longer put together four or five-hundred-thousand-dollar houses on one to two-acre lots and have those sell. Those simply aren't selling in this world. So what we have to do is, is we have to sell towards what's actually selling. And what our information indicates is, is that those are the two hundred and fifty, two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar homes. Two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar homes, when you're talking about property which is as expensive as this property is, this property's tax value is over two and a half million dollars. When you start talking about two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar homes, you simply can't make it financially feasible unless you get to those higher-density numbers. feasible unless you get to those higher-density numbers. Four units per acre is what we look for when we're coming to these type of developments. And as I indicated earlier, the only way that we can get to those type of densities is by utilizing the high-density residential designation in Cabarrus County. One of the issues which has been brought up is, the, excuse me, the, one of the things that I wanted to talk with you about is how financing has changed over time, and how financing of development has changed over time. And I think that when you think about how developments were done years ago, you'd have a landowner who had a piece of property. That landowner would be approached by someone, they'd settle on a price point, they would go to the zoning office and apply for a zoning change, and if they got the zoning change, they'd close on the property. If you tried to attempt to do that in today's world, the banks won't even look at your application. The simple fact is, is that in order to get the financing done, you have to have all of your government approvals and everything in place prior to going forward with any financing. And that's something that we're working on here, is to try to make this particular piece of property something that can become a productive development. And the only way we can do that is to get this density. I think that those are all of the political issues that are involved in this, and there were some legal issues that were brought up earlier, one of which I think is, deals with utilities. And I wanted to address that. The simple fact is, is that there's water on this property. Sewer on this property is approximately 2,500 feet away. And we understand that there is going to need to be significant work done in order to get sewer availability on this property. But no matter what happens, that sewer availability has to occur before development can occur here. What was stated earlier is correct. In order for development to occur, you have to have utilities available on the property. But that's not the same thing as getting a zoning designation change. The high-density residential zoning designation change, there is no requirement within the zoning ordinance for there to be a utility letter. It's not in there. It's not in the zoning ordinance. And what we've got here is, I think, is a want to be able to protect against a piece of property being developed when there's not utilities available. That is certainly something that is reasonable for a governing body to want to have, and it's still present. Before any development can occur on this property, there's going to have to be a utility availability letter procured by whomever the developer is. That developer will likely have to work with a governing body in order to extend lines and to make those utilities available. But the simple fact is, is that before any development can occur, you're going to have to have that utility letter in place. And we recognize that. One of the things that we have to sell to a potential developer is the fact that they're going to have to extend utilities to this property. And that's part, that's part of the process that needs to occur. Certainly, the four-lane road that's out there would provide access, but there's going to have to be some access issues that are gonna have to be dealt with on this property as well. And those are all things that are going to have to occur before development can occur. But until we can get a developer who can come in here and do a good job of putting in those utilities and making sure those utilities are extended properly and get the proper infrastructure, this property doesn't have the ability to be developed. So until that happens, there's, whatever designation is on this property, there's not going to be development, okay? One of the other issues that we talked about here is the property owners who are here, and I certainly feel like that those property owners are absolutely within their rights to come here and let you know that they don't want to have this type of development in their backyard. Those are substantial backyards over there that they've got that look really nice. I'd like to have one of those houses. But the property that's over, that connects to it right here, okay? When that rezoning occurs, there's not going to be any change to it until development starts. Once development starts, there will be a requirement of buffering on those two properties. So there will be a significant amount of buffering that would have to occur. It'd actually be level-two buffering between those two properties. So there would be substantial buffering, there would be substantial differentiation between those two properties. And I thought it was interesting that she said that we have the right to continue to enjoy their property, and certainly no one here would ever deprive them of that. But along those same lines, our client also has the right to enjoy their property and to have their property and to get the economic benefits from their property. And that's something that we're trying to protect here. Finally, I want to go back to taxes. And the documents that I gave you, there's actually three documents there. The first one is a letter from a developer, and it's a commercial developer. And because this property has commercial portion on the front, we wanted to get an idea of what type of atmosphere that commercial developers are looking for in doing developments in today's world. And what you'll find in that letter is that the developer was talking about the necessity of the number of rooftops within a certain mileage range surrounding a particular location. And what's very interesting about it is that even the smaller types of development, such as a Walgreens or those type stores, want 5,000 individuals within a one-to-three-mile range around a piece of property, which is a substantial amount of individuals in order to come in and put those type of developments in. I think everyone on this board wants to have commercial development, because commercial development means tax revenue without extensive services being provided, and helps to get the county sort of back where they need to be as far as getting budgets in line and things like that. The only way that you can get the type of commercial development that you're looking for is to have the residential development surrounding it, which supports that commercial development. And if you look at that document, it indicates that in order to get to those type numbers, you need to be around the four-units-per-acre density designation. And that's what we're looking for here. If there was a zoning designation that would allow us to have four units per acre without any going up any higher, we'd certainly take that. But the simple fact is, is that under the current zoning ordinance that we have, we're stuck with using high-density residential. And I think all of the sort of bad connotations that go along with high-density residential. The simple fact is, is that this piece of property, because of its expense, because of its physical features, can only be developed in a high, sort of high-level mixed-use type development and still be financially feasible. That's really the only thing that can be done out here. And the high-density residential designation with the open space at four units per acre is what is being looked at here in order to develop this piece of property. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have. Mr. Pittenger, Robert Pittenger is also here tonight. If you have any questions for him, he'd be happy to address them. Thank you for your time. Tried to keep it as quick as I could.
Thank you very much. Those were the only cards that I have. Are there any other persons who would like to address the commission? Yes, sir.
Thank you, I'm Robert Pittenger, and I appreciate the moment. I just wanted to clarify even more of the, we buy land throughout the country, and there is really a very broad understanding that in the last few years, we've had a major transition in our economy. And what people were buying, maybe they bought a half-million-dollar home, well, today they're buying a $350,000 home. They were buying a $300,000 home, they're probably buying a $200,000 home. And it was a major watershed, and developers understand that. So counties understand the need to create zoning that will attract that kind of development. And what we've provided in those studies, there's a study from University of Washington, one from Urban Institute, in terms of smart growth, in terms of not urban sprawl, but smart growth, and having adequate density to support commercial. We've got counties in our area that have 90% of their tax revenue, you know, from residential, and they'd like to see 70%. That's the goal, isn't it? About 30% from commercial. You can't reach there without adequate density. And Harris Teeter, if you would talk to them in their real estate office, they would say that they need to have 5,000 homes in about a two-mile radius. Well, that's about three, 3.5 units per acre. So I just commit that to you. It's just prudent planning. We're not here to push something down people's throat. And let me just say, I don't know who wrote the plans, but you couldn't, you couldn't reach the objective of the high density at eight units an acre with requirements that are there. That wouldn't be done. And, but four units is achievable and would be consistent with what is needed to support your interest in commercial. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for or against this issue?
I don't remember.
You have to come up to the microphone. And please give us your name and where you live. Sorry, you're fine.
My name is Sharon Lyons, and I live at 812 Honeysuckle Lane. One of those properties up there backs directly up to that development that they're wanting to put, and I think that it will have a huge effect on my property. I have two acres. Most everybody on Honeysuckle Lane either has two acres, five acres, you know, and they're wanting to put, so what they're saying is that they could put four houses on my property, so that, that's not gonna be a very big house. And so I have issues with the fact that they want to do that. There are animals that come, the deer come up into our backyard. It's wonderful. It's peaceful. It's quiet. You know, I know that they want to make money, but there needs to be quite a bit of buffer if they're going to do that to us. That's, I mean, I understand that the property is there, but my property's there too. And when we purchased our property 10 years ago, we, that's where we wanted to live. That's where we wanted to be. I don't want to be there if it's all of a sudden not gonna be what it was. I mean, I know things change and developments grow and it becomes more and more, but at some point in time, you need to say enough is enough. And I'm asking you, please do not let them do this to us. Thank you.
Thank you. And anybody else that would like to speak for or against this issue? Yes, ma'am? Again, if you'll give us your name and let us know where you live.
Yeah, I did the live card, I'm so.
You're fine.
I was expecting to speak tonight.
You're fine.
But this is the first time I've been here to the meeting. My name is Deborah Mullis. I live at 11850 Presser Lane, runs a little bit beside of the property as far as, it's a little gravel road off of Highway 2427, comes on back to our property that kind of sits towards the back of it. My house is probably 75 feet to their property from my actual home to, that's what yard I have in the back. We own two and a half acres. I'm getting ready to acquire my late father's property, which is another 10 acres, that whole side boots up against to it. Of course, I can say this, no, I don't want other houses around me. I've lived there, I'm 45, I've lived there 40 years. That's why I live there, because I have the property there. I have the privacy. We have seen developments come and go in Midland. Couple of them, what the reason is, I don't know. It seemed like they've stopped developing. Why is that? Is it taxes, running out of money? You know, what's the waste in that? And I see that. And I'm like, why come in and do this high-residential property when I see others that's not even finished being developed? It just concerns me with that. And I'm like, I don't see the tax valuing to going through all this and switching it over to the rezoning. No, I don't want it. I'm totally against it. I don't want neighbors in my backyard practically. I just, you know, just don't care about it. So I just wanted to share my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? For or against? Okay, at this time, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, do you have additional questions of either Ms. Morris, or if you have questions of our attorney? I'm sure either one of them can answer any questions that you may have.
I guess a couple of questions for Mr. Cook, if I could. The, what is defined, I guess, what is the definition of spot zoning?
Spot zoning generally means that a relatively small tract of land is zoned completely different from all the tracts surrounding it. That's generally what spot zoning is. A lot of people think spot zoning is illegal. It is not necessarily illegal. You have to look at the property that's in question concerning whether it is sufficiently different in the context of looking at the size of it relative to the other parcels around it, looking at the zoning of the, the relative zoning between that parcel and the one surrounding it. It's sort of a balancing test among four elements in order to determine whether it is an illegal spot zoning. But, but that's generally what spot zoning is. This is a pretty large parcel. Generally, spot zoning involves smaller parcels relative to the parcel surrounding them.
Other one is that the question about the water and about the, or the utilities being available. And I know from being involved, obviously, in 2005, 2006 in the rezoning, you know, the, when we redid our zoning ordinance, subdivision ordinance, and then follow up with that when we have done the land use plan for the central area as well as Harrisburg area, is that, is there actually anything in our zoning law that says you can't rezon property unless utilities available? I know that we can't, had to have the will serve letter to approve subdivision, but I know in the past what's happened is all this stuff has been kind of jumbled into one because it's been a rezoning and subdivision approval and everything at one time as part of that contingent buying process that a lot of property owners went, a lot of developers went through back, you know, 2003, 2004, 2005 timeframe. But I think, if I remember correctly, it's been, and Johnny may be able to say, add some like this too, that it was just a matter of principle on a part, on our part not to approve anything above CR if it's, if the utilities were not available to that property. So is there?
Well, let me answer the first part of that, and that is, I don't have a copy of the, of the ordinance here with me, but I think Susie has it in the, in the packet. While it doesn't quote the ordinance specifically, it does say that public water and sewer are required for the HDR open space and amenity option subdivisions. And I think that's directly out of the ordinance, if I'm not mistaken, but I may want to ask Susie to address that specifically, because she has the ordinance there in front of her.
That's correct. The information that you have talks about the intent of the districts, and then in Chapter 13, which is amendments and changes, there are four specific things that are to be weighed at the public hearing. And one is when rezoning AO or CR to a more intensive zoning district, the availability of governmental water and sewer to serve the property shall be considered, as well as the ability to provide required public services. And that is in Chapter 13 of our, of our zoning ordinance.
I don't have any questions. I just have general comments. I would tend to believe that we should uphold the planning and zoning decision on this. The unique thing about Cabarrus County is we have Midland, that is more rural area, Mount Pleasant, we have Concord, we have Harrisburg, and within those municipalities, you have a community that's within itself, and Cabarrus County encompasses all of that. So I think we need to preserve Midland as is. That's the reason most of the residents choose to live there, is because they want the more rural lifestyle. And I can't imagine 200 or $250,000 homes, four of them per acre. I don't know what kind of home that would be. So I just, I would have to, to vote to uphold the planning and zoning decision on this.
Well, I'm in favor of voting with the planning and zoning board myself. If you go back over the years and look at the times that the commission board has overruled the planning and zoning board, is a lot of the reason we've got a 450, $500 million debt right now for schools. So I cannot vote to change the zoning down there because of what the planning and zoning board does. There's no need to have a planning and zoning board if we're gonna overrule them.
Any other comments?
If I could, to make a few comments on that, because obviously, again, as I've said several times before, being the unofficial board historian since I've been here 11 years now, is I saw what happened, and Mr. Berg, you're right, I think I saw what happened back in, you know, early part of the decade when we were, and what we found ourselves in, and a lot of the discussion about the housing bubble, and a lot of the reasons today we have that school debt is because we're paying for the schools that we had to build because of the housing bubble. And when the housing bubble went away, we're still left with the school debt that we've got to pay. Now, that being said, I mean, I can admire what Mr. Pittinger's trying to do because I see, it is understandable, the new normal, no longer, in old days, somebody had a legacy farm, and somebody did, and come to them and say, let's build a subdivision, we'll get it through the planning and zoning process, subdivision approval process, but the contract's contingent on that being approved. And you could take that to any bank, and the bank would freely loan money on that. And that's not happening anymore. I think that one thing from that standpoint is the idea that, I think, long-range. Now, we spent a long time getting, obviously, our zoning ordinances and our subdivision ordinance and our land use planning process, which I think is a great process that we do, but we've got to look, is there things that we maybe need to tweak in light of the new normal? And I think it's a discussion much bigger than this, this one parcel of land. I think it's something down the road that we've got to start thinking about next year or two of how do we, what do we look at? You know, the idea, I've always been supportive of the idea of a rural village where you have, again, self-contained, and there's several places we have in North Carolina where that occurs, where you have the commercial close by the residential. But you're right, you can't get the commercial, nobody's going to put a Walmart or a Walgreens on 2427, you know, in that area because there's just not the residential density to do it. If you look in, I mean, rode down to the date to Locust, and unbelievable what has happened down there, you know, because there's more development Locust there is at the Albemarle Road Interchange on 485. And we're, this area, this whole corridor is, is going to grow. It's just a matter of how, of being planned and being done the right way. That, and then I've struggled with it because I looked at it and going, okay, that's why I asked the questions, what I go about, is it physically limited to what you can do on the property versus the zoning? That, if you could take this picture of property and put it closer to Concord or Kannapolis or Harrisburg, somewhere in there, and it wasn't where it's sitting at, I would not have any problem with approving. I don't think the Planning and Zoning Commission would either. And I don't think anybody on this board would have. But I think that's what, where it's at, is just, I mean, going what we did in the discussions and the amount of work that went into redoing our zoning ordinances and land use planning process in 2005, I mean, I would love to be able to say tonight that we could support the property owner in getting this land rezoned, but I don't see, it'd be totally inconsistent with everything that we've done over the last five or six years in getting where we're at now. Now, I'm not saying that, that we need to stop. I think we need to start looking in the next couple of years, making some, having strategic discussions about how do we let land, how does land develop in light of this fact that you can no longer have the whole thing put together neatly packaged before you can get the bank loan approved. And then the last thing is, is that I bet you also though, and I appreciate too, the neighbors that want to protect their land. I live on a half-acre lot in Concord. Come out there the morning, there were four deer standing in my front yard. I live two miles from downtown. And I bet you though, back in the 19, somewhere in the 1980s, we go back and look in the records of the Planning and Zoning Commission, there were probably people standing up and saying, do not approve this subdivision on Honeysuckle Road because it will hurt our rural character of our neighborhood. So I think it's important to understand that as well. So in light of that, I, you know, I see where we're headed, the direction we're going in on this, and I would support the Planning and Zoning Commission's decision as well. Although I still think we need to have some serious discussions again about if we're going to see more commercial investment of the type, of this type, that yes, it does come with rooftops. And we have, you know, and how do we do that? If we let the pendulum swing too far the other way, how do we bring that back, if we need to bring it back towards that middle? So.
Okay, well, is there a motion to approve or to deny the rezoning case RZON 2011-0003? Is there anyone that this time is ready to make a motion?
A move that we deny the request.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second to deny the request. All those in favor of the motion to deny, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes four to zero. We also need to adopt a consistency statement, and I think our attorney will help us with
The rezoning as proposed is not consistent with the Midland Area Land Use Plan and that it admits of higher densities. For this reason, it is not reasonable and not in the public interest.
So we would need a motion to adopt the consistency statement as it was just presented.
So moved.
Have a motion? Do I have a second? Have a motion and a second? All those in favor of adopting the consistency statement, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? A motion passes four to zero. Could you get Commissioner White to come back in, please? Okay, how about if we take a five-minute break, if that's okay? And we're a little bit more than that. Let's come back at 8:15, and that'll give us a chance to get reorganized.